There you go. All right, let me know when.
You're good to go. Yep.
Our progress, work session meeting, budget workshop. To order. All right. We'll call, um, myself, Pam Alley, Jay Compton, Phil Crossman with attending virtually. Donald Paul with absent and Andy Doris, how many are here? And this is the podcast that we sound sorry for taking. So the only item on the agenda is the budget workshop. I suppose we're going to start working right from the beginning or.
Yep.
Fair enough, we need one, approximately. Three thousand dollars each per month. This will be moved with the selected budget, that three thousand dollars. Seconded by Pam Alley. Okay, there are none, all those in favor? And Phil, you would say yay or nay?
Yay.
And virtually.
He said yay. He said yes.
Did you say anything? Oh, okay. Is it version? The budget, I mean, don't do this long.
So happy to give an update, the budget committee, um, they didn't meet, um, they've met once since the presentations. Um, and they came back with a few, just a few questions, um, and they really, we didn't go, you know, tab by tab, but they had just raised the questions they had following presentations. Um, they did want to wait before they met again. In part to hear what, what the discussion of the select board is, but also to know, they wanted, some of them wanted to know more about what the school budget looks like. Um, before going back through and making any more, any substantial recommendations. Um, but the questions that they generally had raised were around, you know, some of the long-term equipment needs, um, the concerns for debt service and capital projects. Um, both that are planned for and haven't, haven't been yet, um, that need to be. And. It was the majority of it. Uh, we did spend some time talking about transfer station. Um, you know, the, the ability to collect revenue, um, potential changes there. You know, talked a little bit about the, the improvement project there at the time, they didn't have the information that, you know, was presented at the select boards meeting, the last meeting last week. Um. You know, so there's, it was just a good general discussion about that, but they didn't, um, go back through line by line again, thinking that they'd have one more, they'd have one more meeting of theirs to provide their final recommendations to you.
So under add in, the only thing they were under telephone, and what, but the real big one like that. Computer software and budget software. The approval that was previous meeting.
And the telephone one is one that, you know, is just acknowledging the cost of the, the spectrum service is now what we're running off of here. Uh, so it's bringing that one into, into this budget line instead of the Washington School Budget Line.
I'll put my. The service fee, I mean, that computer thing is kind of a service fee, isn't it? I mean, that means budget software.
Yeah, I just got as a computer software piece, um. It's where it seemed to make sense, I guess, for me and my, and how we have it set up, we got the Trio software there. Um. Some of the other ones that we sign on to, or the service fee might be the. Uh, you know, some, uh, the IT support, you know, someone providing the service to us versus a subscription fee for a product.
There's no other discussion. I move approval at three hundred forty one thousand eight hundred fifty five dollars. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Pam Alley. Any? Last one?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That's Phil's.
What is he saying?
He's voting, he's saying yes.
It's just funny, he's saying aye.
I think I got it on the.
I thought he was trying to get our attention.
I think I got it on the wrong speaker.
At Washington School.
Are any of the improvements that we had for this year gonna happen on this calendar year? Do you have no idea still?
Uh, hoping to, I haven't had a chance to try and put together an RFP and put it all as a package deal, but. Um. Kind of what it seems to have to be coming to. I know last year, the unspent improvement fund, you know, monies for the Washington School, we did at the special town meeting, have. Those unspent monies for the improvement line, um, go into a reserve and that's something you want to try and do again, at least capture. The, the work that needs, still needs to be done, it just hadn't had a chance to. Um, it'll still allow us to. Bring forward last year's. Um, the painting is still, you know, I think this current year's budget, I think we have budget to do some touch-up painting or a little bit. Um, you know, and we're, you know, still at the point where we, we probably should start phasing to do the whole building. Um, not just touch up.
Right.
Um, has been. It's been almost ten years now.
Yeah, a lot.
Since it was last painted, so I mean.
And we obviously have some clapboard work then, you know, you want to, you want to do that, you want to do clapboard in your sales before you really run into a problem.
Right. And you see that a good, a good amount of the improvements, um, I'm proposing at thirty thousand come from fund balance, because hopefully that's not something that we are doing every year, that's something that maybe they've done once every ten years or seven years, and so. Utilizing the fund balance, um, to capture most of the improvement needs. Not, not raising the additional tax.
Could we get some work done clearing out? Here along this edge, so it's going to get, it's a little more light, even though it's on the other side or.
We can, I mean, yeah, there's no.
You have to be careful.
There's no real vegetation for probably ten or, well, probably fifteen feet from the edge of the building.
Okay.
Um.
It's an on-site building.
Right, it's just. That, that surprised me actually, so it is pretty clear around there. On that other corner, maybe we could do a little bit more, but I was surprised how much room it does have to breathe, I mean, I've seen, you know, houses, you know, on the front side even, it, you know, it had quite a bit more up against it. Um, it's very, very better. Um, but yeah, we can definitely look to try and.
Gotta get that cleaned up, we talked about that.
Same as, you know, some of the, yeah, this bit, whatever this is out here.
Couple of years.
Yeah, I mean, I would be really, we can clean it up, or we can just cut it down, it's nothing in danger or anything, right?
I think it got out of control.
Yeah, I mean, really, you know, if you just. Some roundup or whatever and. Eliminate it.
Way to go.
Oh, well. I move. Approval at sixty nine thousand six hundred thirty five dollars. That's the correct.
Second.
I just asked a question.
You know, of course, can I?
So the improvements. That totally count. Is what is in.
That's the total, for all the work proposed. Scroll down to other folks and see, um. The total proposed of that, all that work that's listed there.
Okay. Right.
Uh, do we, I think we carried about eight thousand from last year, I believe. I don't have that number off the top of my head.
Is that, would that be surplus?
Um, no, it shouldn't show any, anything there because it came off the. It would have come off the books and gone to a due to, do from, you know, reserve line.
So what does a surplus, what does that mean exactly?
That's showing money unspent.
Way back in nineteen.
Nineteen, right.
But that money, but that money, where it was unspent, went right back to the general fund.
Right.
Because it wasn't designated, we don't have a actual reserve. From, right from Washington School.
Correct? We do now, we created a couple of years ago at town meeting, we created a reserve funds for almost every building we own.
Okay.
With acknowledging the need to.
That should be, we should do that, because all of a sudden, it's like, we need all this money for painting, okay, thank you.
Yeah, we can use that thirty grand this year for fund balance, that'll take care of the improvements and should be offset for a while.
Yeah.
And let's not forget to do some of this stuff, so it is more, it doesn't process, you know.
Yeah, and actually get it done.
That would be nice.
Okay, so there was a motion and a second for that amount of sixty nine thousand six hundred thirty five dollars. Any more discussion? Seen none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Assessor. Updating tax map. Is there enough work with that to have like some real full-time, more full-time work for a year or so? Or? For updating tax, updating the tax map and, you know, capturing new construction and. We're keeping up on that, low enough, you know, there's a lot going, there's still a lot going on out here.
Yeah, so I think there, um, GIS work, I mean. Is usually generally separate from, has been from the assessor's position. Um, this is there because just generally think of his tax map updates, um, so needing to be there as an expenditure. Wes happens to be able to do GIS work, he's done some, um, on his own time. Um. But yeah, they're kind of like two different. He's probably smart to try and keep it as two different things.
Then we'll talk about that, we'll be talking about gate, key to the gate planning and.
Potentially, yeah, I mean, I was, the thing I was seeing it more is, uh, like, if we did in the past, we just hired, at one point, Island Fellow came out and built the GIS database, and then he, he came every year and did the tax map updates for us, and then he stopped doing those. Um, so that's when we stopped doing our annual updates. Um, so needing to get back on that, so it may be wise to try and, I don't, realistically see a way to really do it, rely on doing it in-house. Um, unless you want to expand hours for other, other employees, um, and then go through the training for someone who doesn't have the background to do it. Um, I was thinking more or less, can we find a contractor again to just do that task, you know, there are a couple that I've talked to recently. Um, and another one that I have to, to see if that's something that is, you know, what the price for that would be, and I mean, if we keep it one year at a time, it's pretty manageable. Um, I think we were paying about three grand a year before.
Yeah. Which isn't hard to capture, new construct, you know, it's not hard to capture the tax revenue.
Well, right, and so the new construction, that's the, that's, that would be on the assessor's function, right, that's something that's part of our, the spring work, if they go out as of April first, trying to go out and capture what's built or removed as of April first every year. That's, that is a core function of the assessor to pick that up, and that, you know, that does happen. As long as stuff that's happening is, you know, identified through permits, we're able to go follow up.
As long as somebody didn't build something now.
And so then that's part of the quarter review, um, that's important to do that, if you try to get to a certain number of properties, then just period, throughout a certain period of time, so we can figure, we, you know, how many hires, um. We had RJD appraisal working with us, um, they did a quarter review and they did over five-year period, they were to visit every property, sketch every property in, in the Trio database. Um, so that when we look at the property records, we could see the footprint of a building, anything built on the property. Um, you know, so that's something that Wes is continuing to try to do is do these kind of quarter reviews, where you divide up the island and go to neighborhoods, if you will. Um, just to keep up with what's happening. Beyond what might be permitted. So, that's an important thing to continue to make sure we have budget, time budgeted for. Um, just to make sure, because I think in a lot of cases, they're finding a lot of stuff that was removed, you know, you don't need a permit to remove a building or a structure. Um, you know, that's important for the property owner, obviously, and for our records to reflect. As it happens, you know, what's, what's to come off too. Hopefully, they don't find a whole lot of new. When they do quarter reviews, that should be part of every, as a spring work.
I move approval of thirty nine thousand two hundred ninety five dollars. Seconded by Pam Alley, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Legal services.
So, um, the budget committee did spend some time, um, actually recalling, talking about. The FEMA. Flood map, LoMar process. Um. And if you had an opportunity to either be part of the presentation, a few weeks back, with Nathan Dill with ransom engineering, um, we're have since been able to review that. Um, after the fact, you know, you'll see a full island review of something we've been talking about at the board level for a while now. Um, had, had a small amount in for this year's budget, proposing the same amount for next year, we didn't obviously get to it this year. Um, and that. Again, we've met with a lot of discussions from the budget committee, and Margaret, correct me if I'm forgetting, not, not getting it totally accurate, but, you know, was, I think similar with the, some of the boards that had talked about, which was, you know. What do we do, I mean, in terms of funding it, is it something that the town's supposed to fund for private property? Um, for the benefit of private property owners, is this, do we do only a part of it, how do you justify only doing a part and not everything? Um, you know, should there be, you know, private, private match or private funding, and do we then just facilitate, you know, coordinating the project? Um, you know, but there was a lot of discussion on that, and Margaret, is there anything more to add on that one from the budget committee?
I, I just wanted to add that the, we, we talked about the precedent said if we paid for downtown, then it would be hard not to pay for the whole island. Um, the hundred thousand part, if, if we did the whole island.
Then the other, other thing that changed since the, the draft was presented, you said I had the placeholder for preliminary engineering reports for the North Haven Road vinyl co-flooding issue, and then the High Street sidewalk. Um, since the presentation of the budget, the engineers have come back with their work orders and, and cost estimate or quotes, do those two engineering projects. Um, just the preliminary engineering report, the North Haven Road vinyl co-flooding to consider, um, flood controls at the culvert and. And the, um, the road issue on the North Haven Road section was twenty nine thousand, and then the High Street sidewalk design. Um, process was seventeen thousand five hundred, and that was, again, just, both of those scopes were just for preliminary design and concept and cost estimate.
So slightly more than the place I would, I'd trip over.
Yeah, right. So I think at the end of the day, the. The budget committee did, was not proposing to carry the fifteen thousand for the flood map LoMar process. Uh, but to include the full amount of the work orders for those two projects that are priorities and the total there was, is fifty one thousand five hundred. Instead of forty.
Instead of the fifty eight. The budget committee recommended fifty one five hundred?
For engineer, for the engineering services line.
Oh, okay. Instead of forty, they, they have a little more increase.
Engineering, engineering services line was supposed to be forty before we got the work orders in.
Okay.
Um, you take out the fifteen thousand for the LoMar process and add in the full amount of the work orders presented to us, it's fifty one thousand five hundred.
So what was the legal fees delay, so legally eighteen in there?
Correct, yeah. Yeah, be mindful that we've got still an ongoing. Tax abatement and. Tax abatement request as well as a challenge on an assessor's decision for tax event status, that's still in the court, it's in the tax board. Um, state tax board for review. I don't have a timeline on when that might end, so that might go into next fiscal year, um, and there's currently a land use violation. Process in place right now, not knowing how long that process will take, so just being mindful of, it's a small, it's a slight increase. Um, you know, but acknowledging that we've got things currently on, on our radar to deal with going into next year, most likely.
Yeah. Some good ones, too. I mean, didn't you explain that fifteen thousand dollar LoMar thing is, we actually, the town owns properties in that section, that's why. Is it moving, we take that because it would save us money on our taxes? Does that, I mean, on our insurance, is that still not true, or did you not find out how much our insurance could go down?
So we don't pay flood insurance, you know, we have, um, a rider in our insurance policy for flood, um, it's pretty small, if there were to be flood damage and the destruction of the building, if it's just inundation, you know, there's enough there to cover, I think it's like two hundred and fifty thousand per occurrence or something like that. Um, you know, but not having traditional, like, federal flood insurance that proper, you know, other traditional property owners would have to deal with if they had mortgages. Um, so a different type of, our, our full liability is not covered through our current insurance policy, we're not obligated to get an additional one at this time. Yeah, a large part of that was just, how do we justify spending, we're an area, we're not talking about challenging our property, we're talking about blanket area, right, and because we have property in that area. Seeing how other towns have done that, other towns have also justified it because of the concern of a loss of value. You know, and that ultimately hurts the tax, tax base and bottom line for the town and, and impacts tax value and tax rate, so, and all the towns have taken that approach on it. Um, and Extoning was the one that I remember doing that.
Well, I mean, kind of need to have a grocery store and then, you know, they think insurance is the, fund insurance is too high, or post office, those are the two. You know, two pretty important buildings that are on Main Street that I'm thinking, that's why I was thinking that, you know, besides all the other businesses that the town can justify paying for that one. Part of it and not paying for the whole island, because, I mean. Those were pretty important things that the island needs. And the own property there also. So. One sheet's forty thousand dollars, and then the sheet's the fifteen, which brings you up to fifty five, and your manager request is fifty eight thousand. With a three thousand dollar. Budget for the legal went from fifteen to eighteen. Oh.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, it doesn't make it onto this. Actually, eighteen, yeah. Puff on the engineering budget. Are you requesting that goes up fifty one five now, that you've got the reports back to?
The, I'm recommending that we do include, obviously, now that we have the, the work orders and the dollar amount for those studies, to fully fund those, the budget committee is. Um, was in a position to suggest that we don't do taxation, fund the fifteen thousand for the LoMar challenge. They just felt that at this time, there was still more discussion that town level that should be had about the equity of, of funding or not funding, any or all parts of that type of review for the island.
Well, I think they, I think that's a fair point, we'll have to, you know, but I still think that. The Main Street area, we should do, which will obviously cost significantly less than fifteen thousand dollars, hopefully.
At least, probably.
Oh, at least?
Yeah.
Okay, but still, we're gonna need that money, okay. So the, when you're saying the High Street sidewalk project, that's just from the top of the hill down to the bottom?
I've asked them to look at a design for the whole. Whole hill. We got drainage issues, the culvert coming down, there's culvert catch basins coming down the. The east side of High Street, um, that were put in probably in the fifties or sixties. Um, culverts and that type of infrastructure, we generally figure thirty years with good maintenance, I mean, the pitch of it probably is such that, even if they had, have rusted out and failed, the pitch of that hill probably keeps water flowing just fine. Um, but probably should be considered, and when you get over the other side of the hill, it's kind of a combination of no ditching or an open ditch, um, and a few cul, cross culverts. Um, but it suggested that they, if we're gonna design, not just one half, but let's design the whole, and see if that changes anything as they go, I mean, we know that issues of setting crosswalks over that, we know that a lot of people that come off of the hilltop, walk around to that hilltop. Um, you know, the, the width of the sidewalk right now, we know it's not near, wide enough to meet any sort of ADA compliance that we're required to meet, so I just saw that, if we're gonna look at any part of it, they should look at the whole. And give us a better, we don't do the whole project at once, but let's at least design it at once and.
I was thinking that seventeen thousand five hundred was just for like the sidewalk piece, and that's pretty high, but. If it's for both sides of the hill and the whole project, that. I think it makes sense. Yeah. I think it's a worthwhile investment. No, I was just thinking it was just for that one sidewalk, and I thought. Okay, so, sorry to ask. Somebody come question.
Part of this, but we're here for.
Well, so you think, is this board pretty well committed the idea of the new flood map for Main Street? This is okay, and you think it's gonna cost all fifteen, at least fifteen.
At least fifteen.
And that's what you have budget, that's what this number here is, fifteen thousand dollars, and then we can talk about the rest of the island at another time. Maybe for the next budget year or whenever.
And if, if it comes in that it looks like, again, ideally we have a better sense of the cost, I think the way Nathan proposed we do it is that there's kind of like some preliminary work and kind of getting everything together. Um, the benefit of, from our case, and we're having worked with them for a while, is they've done the modeling already, they've got a lot of it in the computer, so they're not starting from scratch with us. Um, so that's where he was thinking that it might be on lower end of the fifteen to twenty five thousand range, um, other properties out here, I think, you know, have gone upwards of thirty, but we're starting from, from scratch and had much more. Much more survey work then.
Yeah.
Um, so it does depend on the scope of what we're trying to, trying to get, if we're gonna have to consider surveying and getting base flood elevates for every building. And, you know, kind of doing that level of survey, perhaps that's where they can reach out to the business or say, hey, here's an opportunity, you know, the towns will only go through and do X amount of this. You know, now would be the opportunity for you to jump aboard, to have your, get your base flood elevation, if your, your building, um, to be included in any of those analysis or not. Um, so I think some of it is just to try and still work out what that full scope will be, um, to work within what, what would be proposed and approved, if approved.
So, let's just take this piece, you know, I move that we designate fifteen thousand dollars for the Main Street. Aspect of the flood map. Somebody would like to second that move. Okay, Pam Alley has seconded that motion, any discussion? Is seen, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Okay, did you vote yea or nay or? Well, I mean, it's kind of hard, I mean, so we're gonna double this budget, basically, we're gonna go from forty thousand last year to eighty four, we have this fifteen in. I just think that's, I won't. Are we gonna kick off the High Street thing then to get back down to? Well, that's why I want, that's why I want to take this piece, I, that's why I thought it would be wise if we just do that fifteen thousand, I made the motion just for that fifteen thousand for the Main Street aspect of the flood maps. We can talk about that, and we'll talk about the other parts of the total department. Devin, I'm all set for fifteen. Okay, so that vote was unanimous, yea, correct?
Phil voted yes, Pam voted yes, I voted yes, Drake did vote yes.
Okay. So now let's talk about. The North Haven Road vinyl co-flooding. How about that? It's been a project, I mean. We know, I think we know that that needs to be done much sooner rather than later. We need to figure out what we're going to do there yesterday.
Right.
And. And did anyone else, so have, I mean, am I exaggerating that or is that just?
No, I think we're all in agreement. That's a, needs something to.
That's gonna, that's gonna be ten thousand dollars?
Twenty-nine thousand.
Why, so why have a, that, the work order?
He just told us that he put those in his placeholders.
Oh, the work orders came in after the budget was presented.
Oh.
And High Street won seventeen thousand five hundred, that's why I was asking you why we're doing this all piecemeal, because all these work orders, there are a lot of you had that fifteen in, which, I mean, I don't know which is more important, but I mean, thirty thousand dollars to fix a culvert seems like a lot of a work order, but.
Yeah, just to get an idea what the cost will be to fix it.
Yeah, no, I mean, that's what I mean, just for engineering, the cost of fixing it, I think that's.
Yeah.
We know we can't rush into them without having an idea of the cost of them, right? So that, I, I put it in there because I was hearing that you guys said you wanted, wanna deal with it already, um, but we need to have an idea of the cost of it, we have to before we can go too much further.
Yeah, that seems.
That's pretty odd, isn't it?
And you know, it shouldn't be like a
I'm assuming they had talked about studying the road sinking and everything else, not just what to do with the water going in, right?
At the very least, you're talking about raising about two hundred feet of road, um, on the North Haven Road, you know, between the, the two depressions. Um, and that doesn't really, that didn't really even include the part back further where, you know, that drive goes in where the old trotting park was, where water goes over there too, um, whether you want to include raising that up at all. Now, and that's a good example of, if you can deal with the flooding, perhaps the water that comes into that cove, perhaps that part won't flood.
Right.
The other one, the other part, and at the end, obviously is, is sinking into the mud, um, probably needs to be dealt with either way. Um, you know, but there was quite a bit, there is quite a bit information from about ten years ago, about a year or two after the project was completed, the culvert was replaced. The town did look at, oh, it is flooding, we didn't think it was going to, but obviously bringing that along, that much more water to come in. And, um, one of the people that worked on that project for the town and reviewing all of that and coming up with proposals, you know, in their eyes, the cheapest and most effective solution was really to downsize the culvert that just got put in. Um, you know, they did look at other considerations of flood control and those kinds of things. So I am given, I have given some of that information to our engineers that have worked on the work order. Um, and Megan's coming out Friday to look at the capital projects that are going on right now, and I'll send her the rest of it, take back or look at and see what they want. Um, they've got that report from the previous company that had the recommendations, so that's a, a big guy start to look at it. But that was the number one suggestion in that, um, that seemed the most feasible, but probably didn't seem quite logical to take out what was just put in. Um, but the modeling, I guess the biggest issue with that was the modeling was never really run on to understand the water flow that was gonna be coming in now with that outside, so that, you know, that probably is the cheapest, one of the, one of the cheaper fixes, I'm guessing, um, it's not gonna be inexpensive. Uh, but we need to pair it with some of the other options that they might, might look at or that we want them to look at. You probably do need to look at doing both of those things, whether they're done at the same time or not, I don't know. The cost concept, at least in the, in the design concept is just one starting point for it, and then you can kind of figure out, um, you go forward with just one right now or both projects, you know, but the, the work order does kind of show would be an option to do this flooding issue, the culvert issue, the road issue, and then option what the cost would be to do both of them. And as you kind of see, if you want to take it in pieces after that, you could.
Yeah, that's, that's, it seemed to me that.
But I don't think if you sell, I mean, before when it was totally blocked off, it rarely ever flooded. So if you just produce beside you, I would think that since that road's been raised before, that you would probably not have as big a problem.
Maybe like Andy says, we did it piecemeal. We could stop the flow, cut that back to a minimum, however it's feasible. That would give us time to step back and look at, see what happens down the road.
Down the road, and if the road still needs to be raised, then we can repair the road.
But we'd have, we'd have to have the study and the all that done first, and that is a lot of money, I agree, but we already know problems it causes. You know, like that road flooded. The tides are only getting higher, so.
There's a reason we put the, the, the measure up there, I mean, there was at one point, I mean, you're talking at the big tide, two feet of water on top of the center line.
Right.
Um, you know, that guardrail's been almost buried before, and it's not just on the one big storm that happens, you know, it does depend on a lot of the factors. Um, and, you know, so one of the folks from the DOT that came out, without taking any sort of benchmark surveys, you know, his first reaction was, he thought it was down probably close to two feet, that section of the road. You can't see through the other end of that culvert, you can't really see daylight.
Hmm.
That's how much of a bend it adds to it right now.
Hmm.
I mean, there's, that's, and again, an issue in of itself, and then you deal with the flood fight first, and hopefully it's only a few inches over that road.
So as far as if we're gonna do all three things, it cuts something.
Right.
So I can't see doubling this budget myself, because we're not gonna be able to, even if we get all the engineer done, we're not gonna pay to do all these projects in the next five years anyway. So what, I mean, I guess the Walmart is fifteen thousand, hopefully, and that's done, there's no money extra after we do that project, right, correct?
Hopefully not.
But with these other projects, you've got twenty-nine thousand dollars just to spend another half a million dollars or better probably. Or it's seventeen thousand dollars to spend a million dollars to do the whole hill, so.
Right.
I mean, we know the sidewalk sucks, so the only, I mean, but if we're gonna do the Main Street project, we know we're not gonna have the money to do this project for another.
That's good, you know, if we wipe out our sidewalk reserve, which we now have, you know, we've committed that money to Main Street, uh, it's going to take a while to rebuild that reserve to do future sidewalk projects.
Well, it's how you want to use the reserve, I mean, that reserve fund wasn't enough to do the High Street sidewalk, even what its current sta- status, and so I think, you know, on, you know, kind of having an idea of, you know, what is the, you know, how do you envision using the reserves? You know, and we, we, you know, one of the good examples I have is the ambulance, right? We knew we were looking for a couple pieces of key equipment. The cost for new pieces was the same price as a used, the used ambulance, so it gave us eight or ten more years on, on the one we had.
Can we take the?
That was a good example of when you have the reserve, you've got that flexibility, but for gold projects, for sidewalk projects, we never quite have usually enough to pay, because it costs so much to do the workout, you never quite have enough, you can do small pieces. You know, High Street, we know is not gonna be a small, inexpensive piece. And that's just part of realizing the cost to do workout here, um, the cost to do construction work, period.
Can we take any of this money out of the reserve? Put it into this?
For the funding of these things?
Yeah.
I was proposing that this whole, as it usually has been, this whole professional service fees, legal fees and engineering fees come from fund balance. And even if we were to add the full cost of those other two studies, and if you wanted to keep the Walmart thing in, you know, I, I believe we're still at a point where we could do that. We can only be increasing it another twenty-nine. More than that.
Six, twenty-six thousand.
Yeah, another twenty-six five hundred.
I mean, once you get these reports done, things typically aren't gonna change. If we wait five years to have this study on High Street done, it could cost twenty-five thousand, seventeen thousand, I'm guessing, right? I mean, is that how you're looking at it too?
Well, I know we're not in a position to wait too much longer to do some of the infrastructure improvements, right? The sidewalk on High Street, we know has gotta be fixed. There's no quick, easy.
I mean, if we're gonna be doing the Main Street project, we should know what the High Street project's gonna be, because some of that drainage might have to tie in.
Right.
Coming down at the bottom of, you know, going both sides of the hill. I mean, we don't want to just finish the Main Street project and then start the High Street project in five years and have to dig up part of it to connect into the drainage, so we should.
Right, that's the, that's the perk of having the one firm that we're working with, you know, having a firm to work with now, because I remember before we were looking at the section of sidewalk in front of the bank going to the intersection, at the same time we were talking about coming from the ferryboat meeting at the other side of that intersection, but there were different companies, and both of them had said, well, if we'd known you were gonna meet and, and, you know, continue, we would have designed the intersection differently. Um, you know, and that just kind of sparked the, well, maybe there should be one firm that kind of understands what were, what projects we have teed up, they were trying to work towards, and that would be a good example of, you know, if they do this, they can certainly tie in those designs to be prepared to accept something coming off the hill.
So Jake, would you like to make a motion about the next piece that you would like to see funded or not funded or?
I mean, I think they should all be funded, it's just.
Okay.
I was, I was hoping that they were gonna come in close to the numbers of Andy, though, and so.
Yeah.
I mean, we've been talking about this vinyl coal fund for, I think I've been a segment for four years, and we've been talking about it for at least all four years and then some. Wow. And with the town drax going up by there.
Hmm hmm.
I mean, probably trying to figure out that little stretch of the road at the very least. I mean.
So what's your motion?
I guess just do it all this year and then have it all, I mean, it's not like we're gonna fund it all to redo it, but we'll know what everything's gonna cost and.
Get the engineering reports.
Right, I mean, you all, like, like after we get talking about it, I was just thinking like with the High Street thing, doing both sides, you should probably know where the drainage coming down to Main Street.
Right.
What needs to be done, because that shit seems to always happen, you know, they'll do a project and then they'll have to do another project, and then they rip up half of the old project, you know, to redo it, so. I mean, seems like we should at least do the High Street project, I don't know if we should cancel the Walmart thing. I mean, we could always do that for the next year and save that fifteen thousand.
That is true.
That's what the budget committee requested.
Especially if right now it has not had, we don't, you know, show a correlation with property values.
I mean, there's nothing saying that we couldn't do that next year, Andy.
Right.
I mean, it might cost a little bit more, but they still have to say they'll lose the information, it's all in in their files, so I think maybe we should revisit that fifteen that we just did and
Yeah.
and knock, and knock that out and go with what the budget committee said at sixty-nine five and stuff.
I think you make a great point, Jake, and.
Because that project isn't as pressing as anything else that we ever did.
Yeah, I agree.
And at the risk of, uh, so everybody following along can now watch me make a motion to remove the fifteen thousand dollars that I just made a motion to include.
I'll second that.
It's been seconded by Pam Ali. Phil is rubbing his head in frustration at me.
Well, that makes, that's a good point, though. That's not as depressing as these other two things.
So it has been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Yay.
Okay, so now that fifteen thousand dollars is gone again.
I make a motion that we fund this professional services budget at sixty-nine thousand five hundred, eighteen thousand for legal and fifty-one thousand five hundred for engineering.
I'll second that motion. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
Okay.
What's the total again?
Sixty-nine thousand five hundred.
Sixty-nine five.
And that will get us the legal services that we need and two project, High Street project, right, right coal project.
Ooh.
Not sure.
Town property.
I enjoy having to put these pages on the map. If you go like this.
Yeah, uh, just give me my shot today.
Huh?
Just give me my shot already. Now, get this all booked.
I don't think I was here the day that you guys went through this one, about the third family, why is that up so much?
Uh, proposal to add an additional float up there, there's only been one.
Okay, so that's just in this. All right, that makes sense, because it's like fifteen thousand dollars for a float rate or twelve thousand.
You know, I understand people have complained a lot about that, but I think if there is something that can, we can put off, I would say putting that additional float would be fantastic one to
Hmm hmm.
eliminate from this year's budget. Unless North Haven wants to build another float. And then we will gladly install it for them.
So that's fifteen thousand dollars for the additional float, that's just our cost, not North Haven's cost? Or they've been for a quarter of that?
I believe the handshake agreement, all these years that they would pay, I think it's a quarter, um, uh, if not thirty percent of, might be just a quarter of those.
So if it's fifteen thousand, then it folds really more than that, this is just our share?
That was a number I've used from a quote we had two years ago for a metal graded top.
Might be more expensive than that.
I don't know, I mean, given, been a lot of changes in the last year and a half, two years on cost for that kind of stuff, so I don't know if that's changed, I don't have a hard estimate or quote from anyone to build it right now, it's just.
It's a much different one than it was a couple years ago. Yeah, I don't, I just, I think that obviously, we've continued to make do with it, you know, people get back and forth as they need to.
I know one thing that also has changed, we put two handrails on that current float, and essentially, I mean, on the one side, it was meant more for docking, you know, unloading backup people. Um, the other side, we've cut into obviously that, that tie bar, um, to put in another railing, because it's at the request of both using it. And so you've lost almost three or, three or four feet of tie-up space by putting that other handrail up. Um, you know, it was tight, it was crowded and, and not enough tie-up then, and before we did that, and that's obviously a few more boats to tie up in that space. I know if you had a second one, it's still looking, there's not enough places for all the boats that are gonna go from up there. Uh, but it makes it a little bit safer and better and, and presumably allows for those handrails to be accessed. Right now, people are tying off of them, and we've got to tend to them throughout the year to hope that the boats don't get ripped out.
Could the handshake be changed to include a higher percentage?
Yeah, it'd be up to us to discuss it with the board selection.
I mean, would that be helpful in any way?
An agreement between the two, the two towns, I don't know that we've ever paid for anything on that side, and that's nothing I'd worry about is well, asking for anything more, you know, what does that mean for the other side, how many improvements they do on the other side.
But they also, you know, we are getting, we don't, they're getting a significant break, you know, I've talked about the wind turbine property. And that TIF, you know, them paying for floats would take a pretty good chunk out of what they're missing out on property valuation loss that we are eating up every year. You know, we eat up, we eat up quite a bit of money that they're benefiting from. I mean, I would say eliminate the float. And.
What do they have to next year?
In fact, I'll make a motion that we do not build a second float for the third affair that, that, at this time.
Have you, uh, you said you were having the lawyers or someone looking to, if we could use that to, money to redo that boat launch up there?
I have, and I think from what I've gotten so far, I haven't entertained it with our legal counsel, I've used it, looked through MMA and the statutes, and it looks as though we can use it for improvements, talks about it, you know, using the funds for improvements adjacent to the particular district, which is about a three mile section of the North Haven Road. And we're still on the North Haven Road, and acknowledging that all the equipment that need, well, most probably, the majority of the equipment that's needed to work on that, that turbine, I mean, comes in after, I mean, they felt it was, the way it was worded in the agreement, that it was fairly confident that we'd be able to utilize those funds for that type of improvement.
Well, that's also where we could sneak the float in on.
Possible, I don't, it might be a bit of a stretch.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think that float ever gets used for wind turbine maintenance.
Hmm hmm.
I think we'd probably, if somebody questioned us on it, we'd probably have to hang their tails.
I am still hopeful of trying to apply for a, a, a big grant, the boating improvement grant, um, boarding infrastructure grant to the state, um, the idea that we could use some of that TIF money as a match to what they could potentially provide for the improvement of the boat launch. You know, whether through that, because that one, that grant program is geared more for, um, improving or creating recreational boating access. Um, not that it can't be used incidentally, if you will, by commercial boating, but I think the majority of the use up there boating wise is generally recreational boating. I think that that, you know, from that program's perspective, could be a pretty good fit to try for, um, you know, whether we can include a float as part of that. Um, I can ask the program at least.
Yeah, right here.
So anyway, I made that motion to eliminate the, whatever the cost ends up being of that float.
It was, and here's fifteen thousand, so you, you're taking the thoroughfare lease line down to three thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars, correct? That's your motion?
Yes, three thousand, two hundred and ninety. So yeah, my real motion is changing thoroughfare lease line to three thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars.
I'll second that.
It's seconded by Jake Thompson. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so that changes, any other, what are the lines here? The thirty-two hundred dollars for the net factory is swapped, is putting in a swap shop. That's only a real change. The airfield is four thousand instead of fifteen hundred. That's for just increased maintenance, right, that we agree we should do because of our airfield?
Yeah, namely, um, namely mowing and we looked at, um. Yeah, the mowing was one and then, um, not knowing all of the costs that Kevin took upon himself to maintain the surface, um, I don't know, it wasn't huge, but. You know, it was probably a couple loads of surface material anyways this year. And we already plow it, um, deal with the breaking out or smoothing out of any tire ruts that get put in it from people riding on it. The only thing that's not obviously captured in here is, you know, we, we know we've been, um, asked to fund a couple of other things up there. And the idea of a larger shed type structure and the extension of two to three hundred feet of runway. Obviously, those aren't included in here. Uh, more, frankly, we still gotta do more legwork on there and it's just a matter of capacity to get to it. You know, but I know that's something that's on the radar generally, um, you know, there is some money in the Mary Talbot funds that we have that it's named after. Um, so presumably we have something that's a possibility to use, so we'll pull those funds towards that. Still thinking there's other ways we can get that done and without including it in the, in the taxes for this year.
Any other concerns in this overall department?
Make a motion that we fund the town properties at one hundred forty-five thousand, three hundred and fifty-five dollars.
Forty-five, three.
Isn't that right? If you take out fifteen from one's.
Yep, one forty-five, three fifty-five.
Three fifty-five.
Two hundred and twenty dollar increase from last year, I think you can sell it that.
I guess so.
I mean.
I'll second that motion. Any discussion? Okay, all of those in favor?
Yes.
Six twenty-three. What's the next one? Law enforcement? There's some pretty good ones here.
Obviously, the biggest increase here is acknowledging two full-time resident deputies.
If we get them. Is there any word?
They, they have it posted.
So they're trying.
Yeah, we might, so we may not even expend a hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars.
We might not.
You know, who knows?
We need to have it there in case they do.
Well, you know, I, no, I agree, but you know, we must have. Right, yes, but it's what the town people were, I think, very emphatic about that.
Well, I heard it last summer downtown.
Multiple times, in both, in both the community hearing we had by the church and then at the actual town meeting. I think people were very clear and it's our job to try to deliver.
I mean, I don't know what we can discuss there, is there any?
No.
I don't find it.
And that's one of us.
Right, but my, my point was, when they said that we could, at the end of next fiscal year, have some money to carry over because they might not hire.
Yeah, I mean, your only real negotiating point is the, the contract terms in terms of lodging and the utility costs. I mean, that figure there is the same, I believe that we carry the same terms we have right now, but times two. Um, you know, the sheriff was, or enough for, for both of them, the sheriff was talking about, you know, because in the twenty-one budget, remember, we, we budgeted for six months of a second deputy. Thinking that by January, maybe they'd have a second one, and it wasn't until almost January that we got the first one. Um, so the twenty-five, two hundred would be the amount to have two residences at the stipend amount that we have. You know, I know one thing the sheriff was open to was the idea of.
Having like one rent each of them, having a vendor was.
Well, the deputies working a week on and week off, like the ferry crew does, you know, you know, knowing the ferry crew does that, that, maybe that's something that their department could consider. And so then you potentially, in that situation, you could look at a multi-bedroom house, one of them, um, and you might not need the second one, if they're only here for a week at a time. Um, could it kind of just be like a?
Yes, what would that? Doesn't that throw our numbers off because we were thinking it was gonna be the first forty hours for each employee and if we're paying for thirty hours of overtime for one person?
They pay on a two-week period, and so if you've got your eighty hours in week one, a two-week period, that, that was something that they had to work out on their end. Um, and I think it sounded like that they were open to the idea of.
I don't know, I wasn't, I wasn't sure if that was gonna make our budget pay off with overtime, because if you're paying for time and a half or double time for each week, I mean, it was gonna throw it off, but.
Yeah, I mean, that honestly, you know, before last year, we were budgeting, I think, almost twenty hours over, at least sixteen hours overtime every week. You know, almost two full shifts every week, you know, and a time and a half adds up pretty quick. I think in the summer, for a short period, we were trying to get an additional day cover, daytime coverage for a shift every week. You know, so we were, we were paying a fair amount in overtime because that would have come at us as a cost of overtime for that additional summer help. Because, you know, they're so short-staffed and they don't have reserve officers, so we were getting charged overtime, right, because that's what those deputies were working with overtime. You know, this agreement still assumes the county would pay for half of the first resident deputy's forty hours, um, and we pay a hundred percent of the second one.
Right. And all of overtime.
Um, anything we request.
Yeah.
So if we're asking for, you know, ten shifts a week instead of seven shifts a week, you know, we'd be paying for three extra shifts at a hundred percent. You know, if there's a call, you know, as, as they've said, we're part of the zone, so if there's a call and we don't have someone on duty, presumably we don't get charged for the overtime. Because that's just a call for service and it needs, needs, that sergeant would approve, needs to be responded to, so there was one the other day. I noticed that Josh had to come down for, um, or respond to, whether he came down, I'm not sure, but had to respond to, and that was not something we, wasn't an open ship for us. So yeah, it would, it would spread that out and it'd be less overtime paid out, but certainly more in other, other areas like lodging and utilities, so. They've got to fill it, uh, before we can go too far down that road, I've got to find lodging before we get too far down that road.
Yeah.
Um, and that is a challenge.
Right, I mean, so all these surpluses that we've had over the last few years, those just go back into the general fund? Is there any way to create a reserve fund for this, to fund it in the future, like with using those surpluses that we've had over the last two years and, you know? I mean, this year, this year presumably we're gonna have a fair amount of surplus in our budget for two people, we only had one. I mean, that would help us get the one ninety-one number down.
Well.
To, closer to what it was last year.
Right here, he, he is recommending twenty thousand dollars from fund balance.
Yeah, but I mean.
You can certainly, you know, from, from my.
I was thinking it could be more like the forty-one thousand dollars because you know that we haven't had.
You could, from my perspective, I was trying to get, I think before, you know, at one point, a large part of, not, not when it was that amount, but a large part of one deputy, I think, was coming from fund balance, but. You know, knowing that it's an every-year expectation, the contract to have this, um, acknowledging though that, you know, we haven't spent all of it. You know, we were about sixty-six thousand dollars unspent in nineteen, fifty-five thousand and twenty, um, twenty-two thousand was spent through December. Now, that doesn't really include December's times, we wouldn't get that till January anyways, but, um. So we're gonna have, be well underspent on that one, we're probably gonna be in the neighborhood of eighty or ninety thousand unspent. So, you know, we certainly could increase the fund balance, you know, acknowledging at least what's unspent from this year or maybe the year before. You know, I would be cautious to just, just fund it from fund balance, or funding too much from fund balance because it's a cost that we may see every year.
Yeah.
I hear what you're saying, if you want to mitigate that increase, acknowledging that it hasn't been voiced, then it could be reasonable.
Would you require, there is, create a reserve account, would require a vote of it?
You can just take it from the undesignated fund balance, that's where it goes if it's unspent. I wouldn't, I wouldn't create a separate reserve.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I, I disagree with that as well, yeah.
You also have the fif, about fifteen thousand, I think it is, sitting in reserve for a police cruiser that currently, I don't hate it, it's not paying for anymore, or we're not buying anymore, we're still paying for parts of the cruiser. You know, maintaining it and fuel.
So, so we can, so I could make a motion that, in the budget allocation, that we just take more of our fund balance for this line than you brought in there? I mean, I've never heard anyone do that before. I've seen it at the school budget once, twice, but not, yeah.
Yeah, my federal desire, I mean, this isn't, this isn't setting the warrant today, so I mean, it gives me an idea of what you, how you want to see it broken down.
Well, I would just, I would just say maybe if we could split the difference and, and, you know, make it round, a hundred and seventy thousand coming out of. I mean, a hundred and fifty thousand coming out of the taxation like it was last year and then, and then, you know, or even a hundred, go up to a hundred and sixty. Just add another. Another ten thousand from the fund balance. Do you guys be for that?
I think it's a.
Because I think we're gonna have some money, a fair amount of money left open this year, so if we could just fund it from the taxation, that, kind of what it was last year. Hundred and fifty, take forty-one, then, or even take thirty, take thirty thousand and then do one sixty-one, that would be my vote.
Okay, well, make a.
I make a motion that we increase the fund balance allocation from twenty to thirty thousand, and the taxation amount goes down to one hundred and sixty-one, three fifty-five.
And would you actually include the budget for the total?
And, and fund the total budget at one hundred ninety-one thousand, three fifty-five.
I will second that motion. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Fire department.
No big changes here. I know internally Mark's gotta change the wages, how he allocates them, uh, with the new, the new, uh, wage law. Um, paying for earned time off, we've got to actually track, and he does, but we hadn't put it through payroll like that, but technically track hours worked. Because forever, even for, at this point, for volunteer firefighters, all part-time, payroll, you accrue, I think it's at least one hour of earned time off for every forty hours worked. So all the training that go into the calls they're on, so, you know, before he's, he had his own structure to allocate the twenty grand. Um, so he did have to modify a little bit. Other than that, I think for the most part, everything's fairly similar. I know this, this year, I think we added ladder testing, um, is another service while they're out here doing the hoses and some of the other things, um. But for the most part, everything's pretty constant. We still keeping an eye out for the radio purchase, group purchases to try and, you know, we had an opportunity last year, we thought we were gonna, the county was gonna submit some grants for. Um, I think you remember, you remember that, it was gonna be like a ninety-five percent reduction in cost for those things. Um, didn't end up getting submitted, but, um, I know that's another big one that's on his mind, but for the most part, um. The sixteen hundred dollar increase there.
When people donate money to the fire department, where does that go? Is there a separate fund?
Yeah.
That they spend their equipment or how is that? I, I forget.
We have the, the fire, general fire department reserve fund for the equipment and training needs.
And that's where all the donations go, okay.
Similarly with ambulance, they got their own separate ambulance fund, it's actually two of them, one for training and education and the other one for equipment and vehicle.
I make a motion that we fund this at one hundred forty-two thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars.
I'll second that motion. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Speaking of ambulance.
Biggest unknown here is the, the patient transport and the second biggest one is the, is part of the wage line. And we know the director's amount is a, obviously a fixed amount, um, assuming all hours of work, but the, there's another big part of that. That gets paid out for being on call and how many hours are on a call, spent on a call for the volunteers, so. Call volume's down, that money doesn't get fully expended. And similarly, if, if we aren't transporting people with a ferry boat and Penal Scott Island there. You know, and more go by lifeline or other means that, you know, we aren't paying upfront for, um, that number drops a lot. So you can see like this year, through December, it was, it was only fifteen thousand dollars spent. On the previous two years, um, sixty-five thousand and forty-two thousand respectively spent. And I think we carried a very similar, um, dollar amount, um, in the total, in the budgeted amount. There was one year that there was a substantial jump, um, and that might have been more nineteen to twenty. In anticipation that northeast was gonna start charging for the five hundred dollars per call. Um, because that kind of seemed to be the trend in the mid-coast for mutual aid service, and when Pat was still with us, she started to work with Sal Thomason, um, you know, it's a much. Worked out really well for us, so.
Yeah. How was the, you know, new billing service, um, because it's been pretty easy for her to work with, or has she not mentioned anything?
No, I, I checked in, I mean, so far, the report come to us, the next day of the new month, which is great. Um, we got, and we also, another big change we did, I believe they're receiving all payments. And so before we were receiving them, for the most part, and then we had, we communicated that to the company, company's billing, they were kind of lagging in getting that. Um, so far, we've only gone what, three months now of billing with them, but in January, um, January, there wasn't a whole lot, there was. Maybe two or three runs toward the end of the month, um, but they weren't even on that first, first month. Um, so it's going well so far, um, we'll see how effective it is, you know, going forward.
But no complaints.
But so far, it's so good. We're still wrapping up with the previous one, you know, because they got so many months.
Probably be wrapping up with them for another twelve or eighteen months, some of that stuff takes a while.
I'm hoping that we're clear of that before the end, start of the new fiscal year, so we can get that receivable with them off the book.
I'll be good.
I move approval at two hundred sixteen thousand, two hundred forty-five dollars for ambulance. Seconded by Pam Alley. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Public safety building.
We're a little bit down.
Why is the service fee down so much? Did you move something from the side to an online?
With any luck, I've got it captured in the.
Yeah, I'm not complaining that it went down, I'm just wondering if the discussion shifted to an online or if it actually went down.
I just said service fees?
Yeah.
Because there was some building maintenance stuff that was, I don't remember, I said building maintenance needs were reduced from last year to this year, I don't. I think we had carried an amount for someone to do some work on the building as a service fee. Off the top of my head, but some of that intended to do with building maintenance needs, and we've not extended meaning that amount of it next year.
I make a motion, we fund the public safety building at thirty thousand, two hundred and fifteen dollars.
Second. Discussion? All of the paper?
Aye.
I have a master. Would everyone be agreeable? I'm, I was thinking of a hard stop at seven o'clock, is that, is that agreeable to everybody?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Pam has spoken. We don't have to do this all in one night.
I'm actually, I'm actually gonna leave in a few minutes.
Okay. Okay. When, when, do you have time to do one more line, Phil, hypermaster?
Yeah.
Okay, let's just, let's do that, and then we can, we down to three, and we can, but. Okay.
The big increase here is on the supply line, and it's only a matter of how we've built out the chart of accounts and just working.
It's our new flow, right?
For an additional float, you know, down by the ferry boat.
And see, that's a float that makes sense, it come in my mind, too.
Yeah, I mean, the budget's going up by seventy-eight percent, but the budget's so low, but I mean, when you're adding a float, that's pretty much the whole budget from the year before.
Right, and it's one year.
Right, and it's definitely needed, there's definitely not a lot of float space in the harbor, so I have no problem with that.
Right? This is pretty straightforward, uh.
And most of the money's coming out of revenue fund balance.
Right. I move approval at thirty-one thousand four hundred seventy dollars. Seconded by Pam Alley, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and in that case, I move adjourned.
Um, actually, if we can skip through the insurance, there's no discussion on that one, there'd be another one under our.
Say the same thing, I don't think there's anything we can really haggle with on this one.
Social security and Medicaid, maybe.
Yeah, let's do the.
Let's do these two, because they are what they are, and it's on here, okay, I would, I would draw that motion to adjourn. Insurance. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm hoping we've hit the, the peak of the workers' comp. Um, it does take a few years for injuries to, um, fall off the, um, on the premiums, so. And then the increase of the service fee and having some, um, some funds there to be able to hire part-time, help to help us comply with the SHAP program, so it's a state program, it's voluntary, but, you know, basically going through every single employee training record and every single policy and manual state wants us to have, if we go through that, you get a kind of a, I'll say grace period, but um, a period of ti, a window of time in which, you know, Bureau of Labor is not going to come out and, you know, inspect us and, and, and being, you know, reprimanded, if you will, because we've just proven, we've gone through everything we needed.
If you do that, presumably your general insurance or some other insurance line might go down when you can.
Right.
About everything, so I would assume that twenty-five hundred dollars paid for it, so hopefully.
I think it's, I think it's talking about anywhere from a five to, I think up to five, if not, maybe a little bit more percent off your workers' comp. If you can get through the whole program, um, there is a period of time, kind of a climb and jump into it. And there's another, you know, a similar program to MMA that follow a lot of the same things, but it's kind of three parts, and so I think, you know, Mark and I were actually trying to hope that we could get through at least the first part, maybe even, because that's our insurance company operates on a calendar year, and so they're, they're open now for, for community, for towns to get into this program. And the applications are due back to them to prove we've done certain things, um, in those tiers, I think by August. Um, and then, if we can do it that quick, it'll be effective for
Next year.
FY twenty-two budget, um, reduction potentially, so we're, we were looking at it the other day, and might try to get at least tier one done.
In July.
And then there's two more still that we could work towards next year, um, that's not a promise, but it's something that we'd like to try and look at doing at least. Um, either way, if it doesn't happen in part of this fiscal year, we're looking at maybe next winter, or next winter project, um, to try and get all the departments in full compliance and have everything need that.
I move approval at one hundred six thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollars. Seconded by Jake Thompson this time, um, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's just do social security and Medicare because. Yeah.
You're not going to call around us and try and angle this one down here?
No, I prefer to have a no-contact approach for the internal revenue service.
Yeah, sixty thousand and twenty-five dollars. That's just directly tied to wages paid.
Well, I make a motion that we fund this at sixty thousand twenty-five dollars.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And now, if Pam will allow me, I move adjourned. And seconded by Pam Alley, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you everyone for joining us. The ones who did join us, and it's obviously, it's nothing better to do on a Tuesday evening.